Good evening and welcome to the 2010 Wilmington Selectment Debate sponsored by WCTV in the Wilmington Town Crier. My name is Jim Stewart, I'll be your moderator for this year's event. This year we have four individuals seeking two, three-year terms on the Wilmington Board of Selectmen. The election this year is Saturday, April 24th. It's my pleasure to introduce to you the candidates that are seeking those two seats on the Wilmington Board of Selectmen. First, Mr. Mike Newhouse.
Good evening.
Mr. Lou Semaglia.
Good evening.
Mr. Dan Murphy.
Good evening.
And the fourth candidate, Mr. Mark Nelson, is not able to be with us this evening and he informed WCTV at 6 o'clock this evening that he could not participate this evening, but wanted to participate via phone. Due to the lateness of his request, WCTV was unable to accommodate his request, so Mr. Nelson will not be participating in this evening's debate. Now it's my pleasure to introduce to you the panelists this evening that will be asking the questions of our candidates. First, from the Town Crier, Mr. Steve Buick.
Good evening.
Second, from the Wilmington Advocate, Mr. Mac McIntyre.
Hi there.
From the Wilmington Republican Town Committee, Mr. Mario Marchese.
Good evening.
And from the Wilmington Democratic Town Committee, Mr. Dan Wondell.
Good evening.
The process this evening is our candidates will all have an opportunity to open with a opening statement, which will last one minute each, and then questions will be asked by our panelists. Each candidate will have a minute and a half to respond to each of the questions. Each of our panelists will ask three questions for a total of 12 this evening. Following the question portion of our agenda, each candidate will have a minute for a closing statement at the end of the process. So, let's get started. Our opening statements first, starting off this evening, will be Mr. Newhouse. Mr. Newhouse.
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you to the members of the panel, WCTV, Mr. Sebujian, my fellow candidates, Mr. Murphy and Mr. Semaglia. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. I look forward to the opportunity to discuss issues that are of importance to the town and to share some ideas with my fellow candidates. Before doing that, I'd like to take this opportunity just to give a little bit of background about myself. My name again is Michael Newhouse. I'm 42 years old. I'm married and have two young boys, Maddie and Tommy, three and one-year-old, and have lived in town. And I'm asking folks to consider giving me one of your two votes on Saturday, April 24th, and over the course of the next hour and a half, I hope to convince you why I should do that. Thank you for joining us and for tuning in.
Mr. Semaglia.
Thank you, Jim. I also would like to thank WCTV and the Town Crier for allowing us to come here tonight and share some ideas. My name is Lou Semaglia. I'm the Director of Veteran Services here in the town of Wilmington. Served on the board for the past three years. I live in Wilmington here with my wife Marion, my three children, Louis, Nick, and Brittany. They've all gone through the Wilmington School Systems, and I too, like Mike here, are very -- I'm ready to go over some ideas and share some ideas with my fellow candidates here. Thank you.
Mr. Murphy.
Not really much to say. Dan Murphy would like to share questions with my fellow candidates, like Dan Murphy and I hope to whatever, get anyone's vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Our first question this evening will be asked by Mr. Buick from the Town Crier and will be responded to by Mr. Semaglia. Mr. Buick.
Good evening, gentlemen. Gentlemen, challengers run on promises and incumbents run on their records. To the incumbents, what specific accomplishment can you take credit for in the past three years? And to the challenger, what specific accomplishment will you be able to take credit for three years from now?
Mr. Semaglia.
Thank you, Steve. Very good question. I don't think any one of us on the board can take credit for any one situation. I think we've worked well together as a team over the past three years. But there are many accomplishments that we have accomplished as a team on the board. Couple of things that we've been able to do is get the Town Council on a fixed fee. That was big when I first got on the board because the spending was out of control for our legal costs, and that was one of the big, first things that I wanted to take care of. Keeping taxes affordable for all, no fees for trash, schools, sports, busing. Keeping the -- I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous. There's been many accomplishments that we have, that we've been able to accomplish. Single-stream recycling was another big accomplishment over the past year, that we'd be able to save some money on the tonnage. Single-stream recycling makes it easier for people to recycle, and I believe that they will, we have been able to save money on our tonnage of trash. Geoinsight, as well as the Town Council on a single payer, single, yeah, MTBE settlements of almost a million dollars, hook up to MWRA. Is that it? Okay.
Mr. Murphy.
Yes. Not really much to say. It's my first time being in an election. Not really much to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Newhouse.
I think that Lou did a great job identifying a number of the issues that the Board has accomplished. I especially agree with Lou's point, that everything that the town has accomplished in the last three years especially, but in recent, in the recent past, has been done as a team. Opinions on the Board vary. We don't always agree on everything, but one thing that this Board has done, the current members have done, is to treat each other with common courtesy, promote a sense of professionalism, both within the discussions of the Board and to support a professional style of government, which is really, I think, one example, again, Mr. Semaglia listed a number of specific items that I agree that all of those things are great accomplishments. But one of the things that I point to is the fact that Wilmington was just selected by a national publication, Business Week, as the best affordable town in Massachusetts. And I've fielded questions from folks and have been asked, you know, what have you done to, you know, to help the town in that regard? And I say quite honestly, I cannot take credit for that. I believe that the town as a whole, the professional administration, they're the ones that should take credit for that honor. But I do take credit for promoting that professional style of government, and frankly, not in the recent three years, but prior to that, even defended that professional style of government that at times was under attack. So, all those MWRA connection, MTBE settlements, balancing the budget, no cuts in jobs, no pink slips, no trash fees, busing fees, user fees, just weathering the storm with these deep local aid cuts is really quite an accomplishment in and of itself, and proud to be part of it.
Thank you. Our next question comes from Mr. Wondell, and Mr. Murphy will respond first.
An article on the town warrant would set aside $125,000 to the Building Department for emergency repairs and preventative maintenance. How would you feel to have that, starting next year, as a line item in the town budget? And what else would you do? What else would be your plan for capital improvements?
Mr. Murphy.
I really couldn't hear you. Can you speak up?
Sure.
An article on the town warrant is setting aside $125,000 for emergency repairs and also preventative maintenance. How would you feel about having this as a line item, starting next year's town budget? And what other plans might you have for capital improvements?
I think I'm not really sure. Do we have my --
Any building improvements or things like that that you'd recommend to the town?
Would I? No, no, not really, no.
Thank you. Mr. Newhouse.
To the first part of the question, whether or not I'd support a preventative maintenance budget as part of a line item in the budget, I have no objection to that. I can't think of any reason why we couldn't do that, why it wouldn't be helpful. As I look back in time, I do think that if you were to read the budget message that the Selectmen endorses and presents to the Finance Committee and then goes to Town Meeting, year in and year out, I think you will see a lot of continuity in terms of infrastructure improvements, both capital improvements, you know, technology and things like that. So I think that the philosophy of planning on that, tackling a little bit every year, continuing to improve things, is something that the town has done in terms of creating a specific line item budget. It certainly might make sense, and it might, it might help to promote or to foster some attention to some of that stuff that the town does well. I think you also had asked what specific capital improvements I'd be interested in working on. I have been interested in trying to improve our field space, our athletic field space for the kids in town. I think that's something that we've tried to do, we have improved, but we certainly have room for improvement, and we need to continue to work on that. I think that we've done another thing very well is additional playground space for the younger kids, the toddlers. We need to continue to do that, and in fact, this year we'll be hopefully putting in a new playground at the Town Hall Park. And additionally, we've budgeted and next year we'll implement a new turf management program, again, speaking to the field space. So, those are the kinds of things I'm particularly interested in doing. I also see that, 30 seconds left, I just wanted to take a moment to, just to point out how difficult it is up here for folks, especially if you haven't done it before. And I just want to make sure people understand just how hard that is, and thank you to both of the other gentlemen here for participating in this. I just wanted to make note of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Semaglia.
I agree with Mike. It can be kind of daunting up here with the bright lights and all the information that's coming through. I want to handle that maybe backwards a little bit. I think this town has done an unbelievable job on building maintenance and capital improvement issues. The schools with the floors and the windows that we've replaced lately and are in the middle of doing now. I think this town has done a wonderful job, even the school committee, the Board that's going to be doing the feasibility study if it's passed this Town Meeting, has mentioned the, how our schools are in such great shape. They're saying that that may even give us extra points for reimbursements. This town has done a real nice job with capital improvements, and I think we're going to continue to do that, obviously. Putting it in a line item, yeah, it might be able to, like you said, we'll know, we'll know that it's in there every year, and different departments do that for capital improvements and maintenance anyway, as you know, being on the Finance Committee. And I think that's it.
Thank you. Our next question will come from Mr. Marchese, and Mr. Newhouse will have the first response.
Gentlemen, this is a two-part question. In the unfortunate event that the reductions to local aid to cities and towns in FY11 are lower than projected, which are currently 4%, and are even greater than what the town of Wilmington has budgeted for, currently at 8%, what solutions would you offer to, what solutions would you offer to sustain a balanced budget? Second part of the question is, do you support the new casino bill recently passed by the House that claims 30% of the revenue generated will go to support local aid?
Gentlemen, have the question okay?
Yeah, I believe I do. I'll repeat it the best I can. If I understand the question correctly, the first part is whether or not, how we would propose to handle any reductions in local aid that might exceed the local aid reductions that we already contemplated. Is that accurate?
Correct. That's correct.
Well, first of all, I think that one of the things the town has done well is to budget conservatively. I think that we stand a decent chance of having a balanced budget and using numbers that are realistic. Having said that, we're always looking to save money on costs, you know, save money on the margins, do more with less, and to generate additional sources of revenue wherever that's possible. Probably the best thing that a Selectman can do, many of those things, we take the lead from our administrative people and our town management team. One of the things that the Selectmen would have to consider, I think, is the prospect of the meals tax, which is an option that's been provided by the state. I have to say that when that option was first made available, I was very skeptical. To me, it was just another tax. But when you really look at the numbers, you're talking about 75 cents on a $100 meal. So in a town like Wilmington, where you have, you know, new restaurants, chain restaurants and franchise restaurants coming to town, both sit-down, eat-in restaurants and fast-food restaurants alike, I think you have to really consider the additional revenue that might bring to the town. And quite frankly, that kind of a tax, I think, is not necessarily, it's not burdened or it's not put on the shoulders of simply the residents of Wilmington. It's all of the consumers of Wilmington who pass through town, every cup of Dunkin' Donuts coffee. So, you know, literally for the sake of a penny on a cup of coffee, it might make sense to take another look at that, as skeptical as I was at the beginning. As far as the casino bill, there's no way I'm going to try and tackle that in 15 seconds.
Mr. Semaglia.
Yes. The, one of the best things about this town, and we've been able to do the budgets, get the budgets through with no free cash over the past two years, get them all in there, is one of the big parts is not just conservative spending, it's conservative budgeting, as you had mentioned. If it does get to the point where we, the local aid is less than the 7 or 8% that we have under budgeted, yeah, that's when we'd have to start looking at other ways of income. I personally would not be for any other new taxes. I think in this economy, it would be the worst thing to do, put taxes, even fees on schools and busing and sports. So, we would have to definitely be creative if it came to that, to maybe even, you know, use a little free cash to get us through a tight second half of a fiscal year. So, if it did come to that, if it was that bad, we would definitely be sitting down with the town manager and his staff, and I'm sure, I have a lot of confidence in them, that they'll be able to do a very good job. And I agree with Mike on the casino issue, as long as it's not in Wilmington, I guess we'd have to look at it and look into that.
Thank you. Mr. Murphy?
Yeah, I feel like I'll pass. Yeah.
Okay. Any thoughts on, any thoughts on the casino or the balanced budget process?
Yeah.
Okay. Our next question, ladies and gentlemen, will come from Mr. McIntyre, and Mr. Semaglia will respond first.
Along similar lines as the capital improvements question, is the state of the roads and traffic in town. A lot of these small towns in New England, the Selectmen often have to make a decision as to which towns will and won't receive road improvements in any given year. Just wondering what your thoughts are on how to approach that question.
I'm not sure if I understand, do the Selectmen choose where the, what towns get the money?
Which roads do and do not receive improvements?
I'm sorry, yeah. Well, as you just, if you may know, the last Selectment meeting, we just found out that we are getting our, our share of the transportation funds from the state, and that's where you have to let the pros do their jobs. You know, we have some wonderful department heads in this town, they all do great work, and our DPW, and quite honestly, the residents that call and let us know that the, some of the roads are really bad and the potholes are there, and I, again, I have all the confidence in them to do their job, continue to do their job, and put, put our money to good work, making sure that all our roads in our town, which are always, always in fantastic shape, we're one of the best plowed towns in the area. And as far as the emergency fix they did on Clark Street there when the culvert washed away in the rain we had a couple of weeks ago, they did an unbelievable job in half the time that they thought it was going to be done. Woburn Street, as you know, is going to be being paved next month, I believe. So, again, I have all the credit and all our, I give the credit to all our department heads that do what they do every day and do it very well.
Thank you. Mr. Murphy?
I feel like I'll pass on this question.
Thank you. Mr. Newhouse.
With respect to roadway improvements, you know, street maintenance and those sort of things, the Board of Selectmen's role is somewhat limited in that many of the streets in town are regulated to a great degree by the Mass Highway Department. However, there are various examples that the Selectmen weigh in on things such as where the next sidewalk program ought to be and where it's budgeted. I think that you'd see, over the course of the last 10 years, we've taken the busiest streets that are the most dangerous for children and other pedestrians. We've aggressively implemented sidewalk reconstruction or construction projects on those streets. Unlike most cities and towns, we've done that in-house with our own DPW, save a ton of money that way. And Mr. Semaglia already mentioned a few of those roads. In terms of the streets themselves, I'm going to estimate about 30, 35% of the streets in town are unaccepted ways. Again, that, that gives the town a little bit of a problem in terms of doing curb-to-curb renovation and reconstruction of those roadways, because there are some legal issues with improving quote-unquote "private land." So to return to your question and answer it the best I can directly, the Board of Selectmen, I think, will continue to prioritize the streets where we need sidewalks, will continue to prioritize the public ways, which cause the biggest safety risks and risks to property damage, and really, that's the role of the Board in those situations, as well as to weigh in on things like intersections and the best way to improve them, be it turnabouts and traffic signaling and stuff like that, which we've done recently.
Thank you, gentlemen. Our next question will come from Mr. Buick, and Mr. Murphy will respond first.
The town has faced more than its share of headline-generating challenges over the last decade or so. Look at Maple Meadow landfill capping operation, the lawsuit filed against the town by the operators of Maple Meadow, the detection of NDMA emanating from the Olin Chemical Plant, the threat of New England Trans-Rail moving into town, and so forth and so on. At this point, EPA is taking control of Olin property, with Wilmington monitoring the progress. Maple Meadow lawsuit has been settled. Trans-Rail still lurks, but it has been very quiet. There isn't even any fighting between Selectmen anymore. Quite frankly, it's becoming difficult to fill a newspaper every week. So, here's the question. Aside from the obvious financial difficulties, do you see any major threats or challenges on the horizon that the town needs to get in front of?
Mr. Murphy?
Yeah. I feel like passing on that question.
Okay. Pass, Mr. Newhouse?
In terms of a threat or a challenge on the horizon, it seems to me that there, as you mentioned, aside from the difficult economic environment and just trying to maintain a level of services without any cuts, and to continue to try and provide services in a way that's affordable to the average homeowner, that is indeed the biggest challenge. Beyond that, I think that the challenge for the town over the course of the next decade or two will be continuing to position the town to be able to make decisions about major capital improvement projects. And I'm talking about things like endorsing an appropriation of money that will give real alternatives and real costs associated with the prospect of improving the high school, be it through renovation, reconstruction, addition, or new construction. There has been talk for many years about the need for a fire substation. Over time, that absolutely will have to be addressed, as will our other buildings. This town has done a fine job over the course of the last 20 years maintaining its buildings and its, and its infrastructure. But every generation has the obligation to put itself in a position for the next generation to be able to continue to enjoy quality services. And from Department of Public Works to Public Safety to Education, all of those are forever looming in terms of positioning the town to be able to make those decisions, and to be able to handle them financially if the town decides to go ahead and implement some of those plans.
Mr. Semaglia?
Yes. As far as environmental issues, no, I don't see anything hopefully coming down the road that would be catastrophe, like Mike had mentioned, some of the buildings in town here. Anything that, a catastrophe or some kind of an issue that's going to come into town that's going to cost us a lot of money, or we're going to have to act on it quickly, we, with what I say, we, the town and the administrators, put us in a position where we'll be able to do things like that. With our free cash, we have the great ratings that we have now, we'll be able to borrow money at a great rate. We have the very high ratings. So, you have to always take that into consideration. I mean, it's, it's like anything, if you own a house and your roof goes, it's something that you're going to have to plan for, and hopefully, you set yourself up in a position where you'll be able to take care of that without depleting the whole budget or all your resources into one issue.
Thank you, gentlemen. Our next question comes from Mr. Wondell, and Mr. Newhouse will respond first.
Thank you. Within municipal health insurance rates now consuming an estimated 12% of the town budget, according to the MMA, is legislation, it's House Bill Number 2509, that looks to give cities and towns the ability to save an estimated 4% to 6% by making adjustments to co-pays, deductibles, and tiered networks, much of the same way the GIC currently does for the state level. Would you support this bill, and what recommendations would you make to bring down the burden of health cost on the town?
Mr. Newhouse?
I have to be candid with you, Mr. Wondell. That is not, it's honestly not my strong suit. I can tell you that the town recently, in, in terms of what the Selectmen do and can do, over the course of the last six, six years, I would say, we've been very aggressive in using the collective bargaining process to try and drive down some of those costs. And the, the state option, if you will, really didn't work well for the town. I know that in terms of having addressed that issue through collective bargaining. I honestly don't know exactly the ins and outs of the legislation that you're describing. So the best I can do is, is to tell you that your, your number and percentages in terms of the budget doesn't surprise me. When you are limited to an increase of 2.5% on your tax levy every year, but health insurance costs are spiking up at certain times in the last decade by 8 and 9% per year, it's absolutely a challenge. I really rely heavily on that specific issue with Town Hall. The Assistant Town Manager actually is really aces with the insurance, and we've done it through collective bargaining. That legislation, we'll have to look at it. I don't know enough about it to answer it candidly.
Mr. Semaglia?
Yeah, I agree with Mike as far as the Assistant Town Manager. Jeff Hall does a wonderful job with the insurances that he does, and he implements all those. The 12% of the budget is obviously an issue, and like Mike said, we're going to only go up 2.5%. I would, hate to repeat myself, but I would let the pros do their work. I would let Jeff, because there's not a lot that Selectmen can do on an issue such as that. We can maybe back them or help them, but in, in the end, it's the collective bargaining that they do with the unions and with the employees to get set to the point where, to come up with a number that'll work for all of us. I mean, like you mentioned, co-pays and different, different insurance companies, maybe, maybe that's what they do on that end, but I'm not sure, too sure what more a Selectman can do on that, with that bill.
Mr. Murphy?
Just feel like passing. Yeah.
Okay. Our next question comes from Mr. Marchese and Mr. Semaglia will be our first respondent.
Recently, the Wilmington High School had a visitation from the New England Association of Schools and Colleges for an assessment of Wilmington High School. As a member of the Wilmington School Committee, I'm aware of the need to update and/or build a new high school because our current facility does not programmatically meet the needs of our students. If it is determined by the New England Association of Schools and Colleges and not by the MSBA through their proposed feasibility study currently on a warrant at our upcoming Town Meeting, that we do indeed need a new high school to meet our accreditation standard, would you be in support of building a new high school for Wilmington regardless of whether or not we qualify for matching funds from the MSBA?
Gentlemen, have the question?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Semaglia.
Thank you, Mr. Marchese. To answer your question, let's go back to the beginning where we've gotten to this point where we've gotten with this feasibility study. We've spent some money on the overall study that they did for all the schools, and they came up with the high school as the number one issue right now that's in the most need. If we do pass the feasibility study at Town Meeting, and they recommend new high school or updating it or additions or whatever, that, that will be, we'll cross that bridge when we get it. As far as, if we, you're talking, if we didn't get the reimbursement, we'll be, and then we needed a new high school, I don't know if that's possible, if that can happen, if, we go through the feasibility study, we've gone this far, I think, believe we're only 14 school, districts out of the 900 that, or three-something that put into it. That would obviously be a very tough issue. You're talking paying double what we could pay if they pay the 50% reimbursement. I think that would definitely be a tough issue that we'd have to look at, at that time. I think that would definitely be a tough issue that we'd have to look at at that time.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Murphy? Any comments on supporting a new high school for Wilmington?
Not really much to say. Yeah, yeah, support. I mean, I kind of agree with him, Louis Smaglia, about building a new high school, but thinking it'll be good. Really not much to say.
Thank you. Mr. Newhouse?
First of all, when it comes to capital improvements that require either a debt exclusion or an override, which certainly a substantial project like that, be it an addition or upgrades or a new school, all that stuff would at least require a debt exemption vote, in my opinion. With that said, oftentimes, it becomes a litmus test for people running for office whether or not they would support a project like that. And I think that they ought to be the last issue which serves as a litmus test, because at the end of the day, every resident has a vote on that, both at town meeting and at the ballot box. With that said, I don't, to me, I don't think it makes sense to draw any conclusions or to take any position set in stone until you have all the facts. And this feasibility study, regardless of whether or not MSBA agrees to reimburse the town 50%, that feasibility study is going to tell us what it is that we need, what are the priorities, what's the best way to improve the programmatic service provided at the high school, and what's it going to cost? What are alternatives in terms of site, existing school, adjacent, on the same site, a different site? All of those things are hypotheticals until you do this feasibility study. I can only say that within the constraints of what the taxpayer can handle and which the taxpayer has to vote himself to impose, within those constraints, I'm going to support whatever that analysis tells us is in the best interest of the Wilmington High School students.
Thank you, gentlemen. Just to remind you, ladies and gentlemen, you're watching the 2010 Wilmington Selectmen's debate, and thank you for joining us and tuning in this evening. Our next question comes from Mr. McIntyre, and Mr. Murphy will be our first respondent.
Thank you. Big part of being a selectman is dealing with public safety in town and all of the policy and...
Do you have to start or speak up?
Certainly. A big part of being a selectman in town is having to deal with public safety, the police, the fire department, the ambulance service in town, working with them and dealing with policy for them. And what is your approach to working with public safety in town?
What are your thoughts on working together with the police department and the fire department in town?
Fine, yeah. Yeah. I'm good. Fine. I mean, just...
Thank you. Mr. Newhouse?
I guess there's a couple of points to supporting the public safety departments and personnel. I guess the first one is to recognize who the pros are and recognize what they have to offer and understand what it is that they're providing alternatives. I'll give you an example. It wasn't in the last three years, but at one point in time, it came before the Board of Selectmen to decide whether or not a particular street should be converted to a one-way street and to change some traffic configuration. I think that the Board's role in a situation like that, first and foremost, is to listen, listen to residents, listen to administrative folks, and listen to the public safety experts. The other job for the selectman in that situation is to vote his conscience. I know, as obvious as that sounds, in public service and in situations where people are elected, they don't always consider the bigger picture when they're in a room with 50 people who are pushing for a particular result. I think that this town has been very effective, and the Board of Selectmen has been effective in listening to those people, but also assessing a situation, working cooperatively with the public safety personnel, and making decisions that make sense. The other piece to it, with, I think, about 15 seconds left, is to continue to do what we can, both in terms of hiring effective professionals and in terms of being fiscally disciplined ourselves as a Board of Selectmen, to make sure that the town has the money to be able to continue to offer the public services that we do, including public safety.
Mr. Smaglia?
Yes. Public safety is obviously a very important issue in any city in town, and the capacity is the selectmen work with them. As far as something as simple as getting their input on different licenses or different permits for, whether it's to close a street for a day, you work closely with them in that. And I think we've had a very good relationship with both our police and fire and the chiefs, respective chiefs, and the members of both departments. Like Mike said, we're very fortunate in this town to have the professionals that we do have. We have two departments that I feel are run very efficiently, professionally. They get a lot of work done, not just, obviously, the emergency things they do, but they work extremely close with the selectmen and the town administrators to get the business done that they have to get done and that we have to get done. So I guess to answer your question, yeah, it's very important to work with them. We've been fortunate enough to have these professional chiefs, these professional department heads that we do have, and we've worked very close over the past three years.
Thank you, gentlemen. This will be the last round of questions from our panelists. Next question comes from Mr. Buick, and Mr. Newhouse will respond first.
If you were speaking to a young couple looking to buy a house, and they were considering one in Wilmington, how would you advise them?
I'd tell them, like any young couple shopping around, do your homework, but absolutely focus on Wilmington. You couldn't find a better place to raise kids. You can't find a better place to enjoy the company of your neighbors. You can't have a better place in terms of getting a bang for your buck with taxes. One of the things that I've always talked about when folks come to town and they ask me, what's the character of the town? You know, how do things work there? And one of the things I'm always amazed about is, first of all, I tell them that there are thousands of people, literally thousands of people, who volunteer and really are the people that get things done in this town. You know, faith-based organizations, church-based organizations, Stamp, to name one, the Fourth of July Committee, who puts on such a terrific show, you know, all the youth athletic groups, the music groups, I mean, the list just goes on and on and on. Literally, thousands of people give of their time for no pay to make the town a better place to live. There are very few towns around that I think come close to matching Wilmington in terms of its sense of volunteerism and pride in town. And on top of that, what I would also say is, go to any function like that. The Wilmington Educational Foundation, last Friday or Saturday night, I went to a fundraiser there over at the Knights of Columbus. And every single function that you go to like that in Wilmington, you will see a person who is a lifelong resident of Wilmington with his sleeves rolled up, sitting beside or working beside somebody who's come to town in the last five years. Invariably, that always happens, and it's the kind of town that people come together like that, and it's volunteer groups.
Mr. Smaglia?
That's a good question, Steve. I think, number one, responsibility, you'd want to say, well, you want to live in a town that you're going to be able to afford. And over the past two years in this economy, our tax, the average tax, property tax, has increased by $14 in Wilmington over the past two years. And what do you get for those dollars? Mike mentioned a lot of volunteerism. Obviously, I'm big into the volunteerism in this town, but you get all these services that you don't have to pay for, and surrounding towns you do. Go back to the trash fees, the school fees, the busing fees, the athletic fees. You don't have to pay for those in Wilmington. And the school system itself, I think, would be a huge selling point to a young couple going in. I have three kids myself. My oldest is in his second year out of Westfield State right now. He's gone all the way through the Wilmington school system. He's had a phenomenal time. He's had a great education. He's doing extremely well out, very well out there. My two other children, Nick and Brittany, I have a young, my young Nick is in the eighth grade, my Brittany's in the third grade. And to tell a young couple to come into this town, to get the bang for the buck that they do on their taxes, all the services that they get, all the fun things that we do in town here, whether it's during the Fourth of July week or the parades, or all the volunteerism, all the fundraising, if anyone ever needs any help, everybody gets together, bands together and helps them. Let's have a fundraiser for this family or that family. And on top of that, you throw in the school system that we have. I think it's a no-brainer. This is why we get the awards that we get. Business Week, Most Affordable Town in the state. Thank you.
Mr. Murphy?
Yeah, the question, I have to agree with Mike, yes. The question you asked, I would...
Whether it's a good town, would you encourage people to move to Wilmington and raise their families in Wilmington as a good and affordable town to live in?
Yes. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
No one mentioned the outstanding and very efficient and entertaining town meeting that we have in Wilmington, which this year, we have on Saturday, May 1st, at 10:30 at the Wilmington High School gymnasium, and I encourage everyone to come to a town meeting this year, obviously after you go to vote the Saturday before on April 24th. Our next question comes from Mr. Wondell, and Mr. Smaglia will respond first.
For the incumbents, during your tenure as selectman, if you could change one vote, what would it be and why? And for the challenger, what vote that the incumbents took, would you be interested in seeing go the other way?
Mr. Smaglia?
Honestly, it does. I feel, we've, like we said earlier, we haven't all agreed to disagree. We've agreed to disagree. We haven't voted unanimously on every issue, but we've done it with civility and professionalism. I think if I disagree with another selectman and we vote a different way, I don't think any less of him or for his vote. I think he did it in his heart what he thought was best for the town, same reason that I've done it, that the reason that I voted the way I voted. Things have been going pretty good the last three years. Like somebody mentioned earlier, there's not a lot of fighting going on at the selectman meetings. I think we're very fortunate in this town, obviously, for a lot of the reasons we've just gone over. And I'm just very fortunate to sit here and say, yeah, I was pretty proud of everything we accomplished over the last three years, part of a good team.
Great. Mr. Murphy, any votes that the gentlemen have taken or that the selectmen have taken that you would have gone the other way on?
Not really. I'll pass.
Thank you. Mr. Newhouse?
In hindsight, I can't think of any votes that I've cast personally that I would change in the last three years. There is a vote that I would like to have gone the other way, certainly. I was on the short side of a vote regarding the type of intersection that we should use to improve the Glen Road, Route 62 intersection. I was in the minority on that one. And quite frankly, from some of the feedback I get, I may not have been only in the minority in the Board of Selectmen, but in general public opinion. But that's what it's all about. You know, from my standpoint, goes back to Mr. McIntyre's question about dealing with public safety professionals. We had, you know, fire department personnel, police department personnel weighing in on whether a turnabout or traffic signalization intersection was more effective and more safe. We disagreed on that. I wish we could get that back, and I still don't see it the way that it went, but that's life. You know, you win some, you lose some. Certainly, everybody in the Board had an opinion, stuck by it, and the business of the town got done.
Thank you. Our next question comes from Mr. Marchesi, and Mr. Murphy will respond first.
The town of Wilmington has been prosperous for many years through good fiscal constraint and good management at all levels of town government.
Could you speak up? I'm not sure.
Oh, sure, absolutely. The town of Wilmington has been prosperous for many years through fiscal constraint and good management at all levels of town government, as seen by our current unrestricted free cash of approximately $5 million. At some point, the citizens of Wilmington will be asking the question, how much money do we really need in free cash? In your opinion, what would be the best use of the free cash we have now in reserve? And do you see a need to increase the reserve fund without any foreseeable decreases in our tax rates?
The town currently has significant free cash available to it. Is there a particular use that you'd like to see the town use that $5 million in free cash for presently?
I'll just pass on that one.
Mr. Newhouse?
You know, one of the things about having free cash, folks rightfully are quick to point out that it's not free, and I agree with that. But I also understand that a lot of things in this world, particularly in government, are cyclical. And I think that experience has shown us that even though at times we build up a free cash reserve that may seem unnecessarily high, the fact of the matter is that we've always relied upon that at some point when things get tough. I think that one of the things both the Finance Committee, the town administration, and the voters at town meeting have done well over the course of the last decade is to recognize that sound fiscal management and fiscal planning involves a real mix of some borrowing under favorable terms, maintaining a positive cash reserve, which gives you the favorable terms upon which you can borrow. So I'm not of the opinion that because at this particular point in time, we've been able to save up some money to simply gut the bank account, that just, to me, doesn't make sense. We will continue to rely on that when we're in a pinch. It goes to a question earlier. For example, if local aid ends up being cut this next year, 10% rather than the 4%, the 5%, or the 8% that you hear about and read about in the newspapers, where do we go? We have the money in the bank. So I'm not in favor of any kind of feeding frenzy to reduce that cash reserve. I think, use it wisely, the same way people do at home.
Mr. Smaglia?
I have to agree with Mr. Newhouse. That is there for a reason. It's not there to, for instance, fund one issue or one article for one year or two years, which has been brought up at a few meetings. It'll give us the ability to balance the budget, for instance, if the local aid is cut more than we had budgeted for. Capital improvements, if something big does happen that we had talked about earlier. Roof goes in a building, something major that goes during the year that we, obviously you can't budget for or think about, that's what that money is for. You know, they call it a rainy day fund. Well, that's exactly what it's for. And again, that allows us to get the bond ratings, the high ratings that we get, to get the more favorable rates, when we do need to take out a loan for hopefully something that doesn't drain down that account.
Thank you. Our last question this evening comes from Mr. McIntyre, and Mr. Newhouse will respond first.
Thank you. In more of a general sense, where do you picture the town of Wilmington being, say, 15 years from now? And what can the Board of Selectmen do to get the town to that point over the next three years?
I think the next three years is going to be particularly important to continue to set the tone that's prevailed in this town for several years now, and that's a setting in which everybody has the opportunity to live in town and enjoy the services and to do so in a way that's affordable. I think it's very important in the next three years for the Board of Selectmen to avoid pitting any one group against the other in terms of municipal services. Public Administration 101 says that the key is to be able to allocate resources amongst competing needs. And I think one of the things that selectmen can do is to exercise some leadership and make sure that when we do that, we do that fairly. We don't pander to one group of voters who we think might get us reelected to the detriment of every other segment in town. That's one very tangible thing that the Board of Selectmen can do over the next three years that'll set the tone for the next decade and beyond. And it will enable the town to continue to position itself to make decisions about what the town should do over the long haul. We had talked earlier about things like, you know, high school services, fire safety services, Department of Public Works, which the consensus out there is that Wilmington's Department of Public Works is second to none. You know, those things, we are going to have to invest in our capital infrastructure over the course of the next 20 years, you know, live up to our responsibility of this generation who leaves the town in as good a shape as it was in when we, you know, when we moved here or when we grew up, when we started raising families here. And the way to do that is to continue to be disciplined the way we have.
Mr. Smaglia?
Thank you. I guess I would start out by saying, 15 years from now, you can't get there without next year, in the next three years. And I think the next three years are going to be extremely important for many reasons. Obviously, the economy being number one. And I think we need to continue to create an atmosphere for business in town so we can separate, so we have the two tax, there's different, the two different tax... can separate, so we have the two tax, there's different, the two different tax levy, the taxes fairly, so we don't hit one group, as Mike just said. We need to continue to maintain the level of services that we've become accustomed to and to keep affordable for all. So I think 15 years from now is a long way away, but we can't get there without going through next year and the next three years. And all the stuff that we've talked about tonight is going to be extremely important and extremely difficult to be able to do what we do now with local aid cuts being what they are. Even if they're not as worse, not as bad as they may be, they're still cutting them. I think 234 million was just said yesterday they were going to cut off the speaker's budget, was 234 million. So we've got to continue to find ways to keep the educational, recreational programs, needs of our young Wilmington residents. You know, it may sound corny, but our children are our future. You know, I pray every day that my children will have a better life than I had. And I didn't have a terrible life. But I make every decision in my life and every vote on this board with that in mind. So I think the answer to your question is 15 years from now, I think this town is going to be amazing. Thank you.
Mr. Murphy?
Yeah.
Thoughts on your goals and where you see the town over the next three years?
I don't know really much to say. I think it'll be good 15 years from now, but...
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we go to closing statements, I wanted to thank Mr. George Breslin for being our timekeeper this evening and keeping us on task. And to the folks in the audience, putting a name on the ballot is a very difficult and stressful thing that each of these candidates go through, and they should be proud of the fact that they have put themselves before you this evening and on the ballot and for the courage they have to do so. To all of our candidates tonight, congratulations on that. Our closing statements this evening, we start with Mr. Murphy.
Yes. Just not really much to say. First election, but just hope, whatever. Thank you.
Good luck. Mr. Newhouse?
First of all, seeing as Mr. Nelson didn't show up and we've moved along more quickly than we had hoped, I'm hoping to get a little bit of leeway on the time clock to say appropriate thank yous on this. But again, thank you to WCTV, the Town Crier, the panel, the moderator, the timekeeper, especially to the other candidates and to folks who've tuned in to watch and to listen. Very much appreciate the opportunity to be here and to try and convince you that you should cast one of your two votes on April 24th for me. I don't make a lot of promises. One of the things that I always talk about when I'm out there campaigning is that I'll give you an honest answer. I'll try and assess a situation, try and use my head, vote my conscience. The only thing that I can promise to deliver is honesty and continuing to work hard and continuing to try and promote a sense of professionalism and mutual respect and common courtesy on the Board of Selectmen. I think that we've certainly done that. We've demonstrated to the town that the entire board likes to operate that way, and I have every belief that we're going to continue to do that. Again, a reminder that the election is on April 24th. Polls are open 8 o'clock in the morning till 8 o'clock at night. And then I do just, again, thank you for your indulgence and your time. I just, again, wanted to thank both candidates. I know that the first time that I ever did this was extremely difficult, and, you know, it's gotten a little bit easier every time. I still wouldn't say it's easy, but I certainly appreciate, you know, my fellow candidates coming here tonight, doing something, and in Mr. Murphy's case, for the first time. Live shot, Louis, he's never afraid of a camera, but sincerely, I appreciate both of you being here. And Mr. Murphy, I hope we get the chance to talk some more and maybe discuss some of the things that are on your mind. Thank you, everybody, for tuning in.
Mr. Semaglia?
I too would like to thank WCTV, the Town Crier, the panel, everybody here working. The cameras have told me to look into that one. And Jim for doing his usual wonderful job that we'll see again at town meeting in a few weeks. And to remind everybody that it is very important to get out there and vote. Over the past three years, we've been able to do many, many amazing things. And a lot of the things that we've been able to do, we've been able to do with civility, professionalism, and those are the things that I really would like to keep moving forward with the board, and that's one of the reasons why I'm running. To go over all the things that we've gone over tonight, I believe are very important, the fixed fee for town council, geo insight, single stream recycling, MTBE settlements, all those things were fixed, balanced budgets. All those things are extremely important and take a lot of work, a lot of hours behind the scenes, whether it's with the Board of Selectmen, the town manager and his staff, all the department heads. I've mentioned that a few times. And if the voters see fit to reelect me for another term, I will continue to work hard and to maintain affordable tax rates for all and all the issues, again, that we just went over this evening. I work with the other board members, department heads, to maintain the level of service that we have become accustomed to here in Wilmington. And I'd be very proud and honored to serve as a Board of Selectmen of this town for another three years. And I also would be remiss if I didn't thank my family, my wife, Marion, Louis, Brittany, Nick, they've stood behind me for everything I've ever done, and I'm very proud to be here tonight. And again, thank you. Thank you. Nice job. And thank you too, Mike.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for joining us this evening. Thank you to the candidates, to Mr. Newhouse, Mr. Semaglia, and Mr. Murphy, and Mr. Nelson, who was able to be with us this evening. Good luck on Election Day to our panelists, Mr. Bjork, Mr. Wondell, Mr. Marchesi, Mr. McIntyre, and to WCTV. Thank you for holding this event this evening. Ladies and gentlemen, most importantly, without you, this process doesn't work. If we've learned anything in recent elections, especially those in Massachusetts, interesting things happen when people participate. Please come to the polls on April 24th and vote for two of these candidates. And then the following Saturday on May 1st, please join us at town meeting at 10:30 to vote on 42 articles that will come before the town of Wilmington. Thank you for joining us. Have a good evening.